Good evening, welcome to our regular session of American Council of the Town of Berlin. It's Monday, June ninth, twenty twenty five. Please join us in a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item on my agenda is the approval of the minutes.
What should be approved?
It's a motion by council member worse.
Second.
Second by council member Nichols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that the regular session minutes of May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, pass unanimously with all council members present. Up next is agenda item two, which is a public hearing on the town's ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero two, and that's our FY twenty six budget. It has my self-running point, but we've talked about this budget for several months now. It's a, it's a solid budget. We've worked together as a group on this. There have been a few minor changes. I will have the finance director report on, report out on those, and then hopefully we can open up the public hearing.
Few minor changes, good for everybody. We have discussed at the introduction to combine together from the retention line of the full line give cards and roll them into the longhand payment. So this amount reflect is after tax amount of three eighty five right now per each employee in each department. So there is a slight increase overall through the whole entire funds. Additionally, fifty thousand been added to the Worcester County unrestricted grant and the amount to offset it placed the contingency. There are minor changes in personnel, basically move in people in steward fund around, and one person announced retirement, so we'll be replacing this position or replenish this position. So it would be two people at the same time going on while in training. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. The budget's been a solid work by all four departments, and I want to thank everyone that's in attendance tonight and everybody that's worked on the budget. I thank my colleagues up here on the council. I think it's solid. We've, we've kept the tax rate same. We've invested in some significant projects for FY twenty six, and all around, I think it's a pretty good package. So with that, let's open up the public hearing, see if anybody would like to address the mayor and council regarding ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero two. Anybody? Okay. We'll close the public hearing and then take action by the council.
Well, actually, I do have a quick question.
Go ahead.
So I can't remember where it is now, but in the, I think it said planning for the comprehensive plan updates. We have it budgeted for, it's on page thirty-three of the budget. We have that down there in planning and budgeted a hundred thousand. I understand that there are some concern from, from the administrator and the planning and the mayor and some of us that that is actually not enough for that. So I don't think that I'm going to motion for change for that right now. However, if there's appetite here on the tour on the council, I'm not saying all of it either, some of the additional fifty thousand grand we got from the county could kind of get us to where we are or where we'd like to be for the comp plan update. So I'm just throwing that out there as an option to do at another time if we need to amend anything and help us get to that goal of a higher budgeted amount already in place for the comp, comp plan update.
Council member worse isn't involved on that. We've got numbers between, I think a hundred may do it, but it could be upwards to a hundred and thirty to a hundred and sixty.
It's hard to judge. For instance, when we looked at just recently was the city of Cambridge, I think it was one sixty eight, but it is Cambridge. It's a larger, you know, I don't know how much that plays into this type of.
Right, and I understand that. I mean, my personal goal after the Cambridge discussion, I was thinking maybe like one twenty, one thirty would kind of get us to where we might want to be. And on top of that, I did have a question. It's kind of a process question, and maybe Natalie, you can help me understand a little bit better. For the comp plan, I was just wondering if and/or should the enterprise funds be chipping in a little bit to it? Like not, I'm not saying tens of thousands of dollars, but maybe a thousand, two thousand dollars each utility towards the comp plan, or do you feel that it's already covered with the general overhead?
It's covered with general overhead somewhat, not particularly. We don't cover by overhead anything that performed by outside contractor. Overhead is mostly reimbursement by utilities for personnel cost of administration. But as of right now, I don't see that utility funds can cover anything or pitch in towards the comp plan, just for simple reason, there is not contingency.
Right.
So it's very lean, and also I don't think that would be somewhat applicable.
Okay. I would tend to agree. It really is a more of a planning document. It does speak to utilities to an extent, but not.
Right, okay, well, that's fine. I just wanted, before we officially approve the budget, I just wanted to put that on the radar that it is something we talked about. We, I think I'm agreeing with the mayor that I'd rather have the money in there for the comp and update than try to find it later, but we do have avenues that we can explore in the future for it.
We've got about forty-four thousand dollars in contingency. Now, if it comes in at one sixty, we might have to relook at the scope of work because I think that might be on the steeper side of things. But I think that having a little bit of a lever to pull in contingency.
Is it?
I, I think that I feel comfortable with it. It might come in north of a hundred. We put our best guess there, but if we had a contingency of like eighteen thousand like we did last year, I'd be a little bit more concerned.
Well, if there's no other discussions, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the FY twenty six budget as presented.
Second. So a motion by council member worse, the second by council member ner. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that the FY twenty six budget ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero two passes unanimously. Thank you to everyone. Really, this is, yeah. I cherish this. It's done on a heavy lift. It starts in January. Yes, it is. We now have, what, Natalie, now you're getting ready for the audit and the budget again.
Exactly. No sooner than one year is done than you're thinking about the next.
That's right. All right. Items for approval for each one of these is action. There is an opportunity for public comment. So agenda item three A, motion twenty twenty five dash thirty-two, special use of the park request for the tingle, mumfir family reunion. And we have Posley. Yep, Ms. Posley, do you have a call?
Mayor, she's come up to the table just to provide some clarity as to why this ends on the agenda for approval. Starting on, I guess, page twelve of the package, especially the partner location of park pavilion application for her family reunion event proposed for August second. There are no special requests being made, resources I should say, for the event. It's just formally on the agenda for approval because the expected number of attendees exceeds fifty.
Thank you. Anything you want to add?
No, well, I just want to add that with our family is, we don't get to see anybody. Usually what we do unfortunately is at funerals, and we have kids that are growing up that need to know who their family is. My sister per se, we have family members that come up to us and she's like, well, who's that? Oh, that's your cousin. And she looks at me like, okay, that's your cousin, that's not my cousin. So, you know, they, we need to know who our family is, and it's been a very, very long time. And thank God this year so far, we really haven't had to bury anyone, so that's a good plus.
Hopefully it's a positive.
Yes, and we have kids that are getting ready to go to college, so we're trying to at least let them read and see faces and see where they're from. So in case there's a problem, they happen to be at the college where our family member lives, they have somebody to reach out to to help them out.
Support network.
Yes.
Very nice. All right, so we'll take any, any comment from the public regarding motion twenty twenty five dash thirty-two. Seeing none, if they ask by the council. So the motion by Vice President Burrell, second by council member Nichols, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that motion twenty twenty five dash thirty-two passes unanimously. Thank you.
Before you leave, my grandmother used to say, have to have these family reunions because if you don't, later on when you meet that dude at college and he turns out to be your cousin, you already knew it. You gotta be careful.
Well, we're wishing you good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right, up next is the agenda item three D, motion twenty twenty five dash thirty-three, and that's the approval of the free library box in Eagle Scout troop two twenty seven. And we have our special projects coordinator Kate and Vincent.
Yes.
So Vincent, welcome.
Hi.
Do you want to, I think part of this, if we're not going to let Kate try, then you're going to tell us a little bit about your project.
Yeah, that'd be great. So my, thanks again, my name is Vincent Williams-Keke. I'm a life scout of troop two two five, working towards my Eagle Scout rank. I'm sponsored by the Berlins Lions Club. I'm a swimmer on the Ocean Park swim team, Stevie Theater High School swim team, engineering student at Ulster Technical High School, and a sophomore. So what, thank you. What I'm building is a little free library. It's essentially a small wooden box that people can open and trade books when they visit. Where this is going to be put, and it's going to, I'm thinking of maybe putting it in Stevie Theater Park. There's a picture, I think, here by the, yeah, there's a picture at the top. It's by the stop sign near the parking lot, going towards the path. I was thinking of maybe putting it in the front of the park. And the reason for this is because many parents who visit the park and take their kids, you know, might want to read some literature and it'd be something for them to do. There's a lot of benches also in Stevie Theater Park, so it'd be great for them to just sit down and read while their kids are playing. I think it's very important to implement reading nowadays since many people are on like their cell phones and such. I actually already met with the Parks and Rec mission and talked about it, and they thought it was a good idea. I'm going to fundraise all my money through my scout troop, friends and family, and so it shouldn't be, you know, that hard to get money to make it. I'm ordering a kit, and then I'm putting that together and then painting it with waterproof paint, which if you take a look down there, there should be some pictures of just different materials. So I was thinking of going, actually in the bottom left right there, that's the original kit, but I'm thinking of making it look more natural, and that's what they all kind of wanted, and I think that would be a cool idea, so maybe like a wood color. The dimensions and details are also listed upwards, so it's made out of plywood, metal roof, and the post is made out of cedar, so it's very strong. The waterproof will be from the paint, which I've looked at some good colors. And, you know, when I was in New York, when I was, I used to live there, there's a little park I visit a lot, and I always remembered opening up a box and just reading books. So it always kind of brings back some nostalgia, and I just always thought it was very interesting. So the, this is a little something that I'm going to have to work with, but basically to maintain it, I can't say like within the Eagle Scout, not requirements, but guidelines, I can't, I have to say my project is finished. So I've talked with my, like, I've talked with my Eagle Scout, like, project helper about like how I can maintain it with still not keeping the project going. So I've talked with him, unable to, me and my mom, my mom being in charge of the, the steward of the library to just come every like month or so and switch out books, which I'm getting these books. I'm going to talk with the Berlin Library, so if they have any old books that they don't want to use, they can just donate it to me and I can put it in the library. And we're just going to kind of go over there, like my, my mom and I, just we'll go to the park and make sure the, the library is upkeep and, you know, good with books.
You can also share some information once the library is built with Katie and the Parks Commission, and they might be able to do a post too on social media, and Ivy might be able to collect some books over at the walking center that we could assist with. Do you want to introduce mom who's here with you?
Oh, yeah, she's.
Sounds like you have a lot of things going on, so your mom's very busy.
Very busy, mom.
Who is mom? Go ahead.
That's, my mom's Jennifer over there.
Nice to meet you.
Hello, Miss.
Congratulations.
We've come to these before.
All right, well, let's see. Any questions from the public? Any comments from mom? None, none. Okay, any comments from the council?
I just have one, I think it's, Vincent, this was a great presentation, by the way, very, very well. It's a cool idea. I was getting, I was getting my packet ready here for tonight. I actually got an alert from the Baltimore Sun that they did an article on this type of program in another park there. So I like it, I think it's a great idea, and you're really taking it on. But the most important question I want to ask, so Minneapolis, New York, or Berlin, Maryland, which one's cooler?
Oh.
Good job. Yeah. You got the just hook from. Any other questions for me?
I'm going to say, I think this is a wonderful Eagle Scout project, and I think it will be very well received by the residents of Berlin or the community. I remember my Eagle Scout days when I did my project way back when, but it was a lot of fun and you learn a lot. It's a great process to go through, so congratulations.
Thank you.
I did have one.
Yeah, now, we wouldn't know what your project was.
Yeah, I was about to say. It was right in the mid-gas crunch of the seventies, so I did an energy conservation project.
You were ahead of your time.
I was. Trying to give people, you know, advice on how to conserve energy, homes that.
So here's a reason we can try right off, right? Yeah. Tim. If you need an energy audit helper, if you need an energy audit helper, he is available.
I did have one question. Is it up on like a pedestal or a post, or is it right on the ground? I wasn't a hundred percent sure.
A cedar post, right?
Yes, a cedar post.
And then you're covering, I saw the brick, the brick is going to cover around the post, right?
So that was one of the material ideas, not to build it from that, but to make it looking like.
Oh, got it, got it.
But I think I want to go with more of a, like a wood cover.
Marks of Recreation Commission, yeah. They wanted this more.
One of the big ones, say that. Yeah, okay.
I just have a suggestion, because we've done installations of some poles, and especially over at Theater Park, we did one close by, but either way, make sure the pole you use and the base that you use is nice and thick and heavy and doesn't sway or fall forward because the ground is so wet that the heavier the bulk is going to make it fall forward if it's not like secured, the bottom is really thick.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations, by the way.
Send it in concrete.
Maybe when he goes to put it in, the public works can be there to help sell.
All right, but they're going to send it in concrete, right?
I hope they are. That's why.
Concrete?
We'll be there to assist.
Yeah, Vincent. I'm not concrete.
Yes.
I like that.
Not all the posts are set in concrete, like the one that was just installed at Burridge Park for the pollinator garden thing was not set in concrete. FYI.
I choose concrete.
I was shocked, but he said because it's such a big post, it didn't need it. As we looked at another post, it was falling forward. I don't know what, I'm not an expert.
Well, Jimmy, you'll, you'll be on site to help me on site. All right, let's get Vincent going.
Make a motion to approve, oh, sorry, please, motion two twenty twenty five dash thirty-three.
The motion by council member worse.
Second.
Second by council member Green. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that motion twenty twenty five dash thirty-three passes unanimously. Good job, Vincent. Here you are. Perfect. Give me the proof.
It's a, I thought I was trying to get my bear now.
Vincent, how many bags did you have? Still have more than twenty-one. I got all the required. Good job, congratulations, buddy. All right, up next is motion twenty twenty five dash thirty-four, that's the approval of the land and water conservation fund and community parks and playgrounds grant applications for escape parks. Been waiting for this for a while, and special projects coordinator Kate Dowd and Tony Weig are going to run for it.
All right. So on page twenty-two of the meeting packet, there's a staff report that outlines the town's intent of course any mayor and council approval to apply for FY twenty-seven land and water conservation grant funding to support the proposed skate park at Harden Park specifically, of course parcel four ten. The town has partnered with We Heart Berlin at this stage of the project, so the primary objective now is to just secure the necessary funding to keep the project moving forward. So in the packet, as part of the application, you'll see a total estimated cost of the project at nine seventy-five, nine hundred seventy-five thousand. But we plan to submit a preliminary application that's included in the meeting packet for land and water conservation funding and, oh, sorry, and FY twenty-seven, the community parks and playgrounds application, which is what is being proposed tonight. In other words, review the potential funding amounts for the request, but as we do talk about that, one thing that I do want to bring to your attention is that the land and water conservation fund grant does require a fifty percent non-federal match. So our plan is to submit an FY twenty-seven application for land and water conservation fund grant funding as well as a community parks and playgrounds application. And it all goes as planned, fingers crossed. The plan is to hopefully use the community parks and playgrounds funding as the match for the land water conservation fund grant. However, you'll see in my staff report that should we not receive community parks and playgrounds, We Heart Berlin is committed to meeting that match should you be fortunate enough to receive a land water conservation fund grant funding. So a little bit going on, so I just wanted to explain the difference between the two. So we are ultimately tonight seeking approval to apply for both.
Because the group's used to community parks and playgrounds, they're not as used to the land, water.
Yes.
Commentary.
We sent it to webinar, and actually I sent a webinar, and then we actually met with Molly Pickle from LWCF, and she made it very clear this is a great sort of project for that, and that matching it along with the CPP was sort of good practice.
We always like grants where you can get a one grant and use the other grant as a.
Yes.
Now, Tony and I talked a little bit because the price tag is almost a million dollars, and that the likelihood in our experience, the most we're going to really get from community parks and playgrounds is about two fifty. So when Tony and I talked about the best way to kind of leverage those things, we talked about potentially phasing to.
Sure. So basically, we would look at phasing, a phaser purge, and we think that, we don't think, we know that the first swath of around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is going to be land prep demolition and getting the site correct, correct and elevated with soil and compaction and prep work. The bulk of the ex, the next five hundred thousand dollars is concrete. So basically, it'd be site preparation first, build the rest after that. Once we get the ball rolling with grants and with funding and investors around the area that I've already spoken with, start seeing, what I've been told is, once we see that you're real, we're going to show you that we're real. So I'm not that convinced from people who have, it's been nice, it's been very nice, but basically they've all said the same thing. Once we see it's real, it's going to be real. So we just got to get to a certain point with some federal and state grant funding and or some other private funding. Once we get to that point, others are going to jump on board pretty fast.
And like Tony and I talked about, if we can get community parks and playground, if we write a solid application, our, our funding history has been pretty solid.
Yes.
So with that, if we can tie the route in for phase one, like Tony and I talked about, that the likelihood of them funding a phase two to complete the project is pretty likely.
And the way Kate's written already for LWCF, and I've already written one for twenty-six for CPP, we're going to just translate that up to twenty-seven, take that documentation that hers put together, get the best version of it. We've already got the documentation ready for CPP as well as this LWCF. We've got it all lined up, ready to roll. So we're ready for the June twenty-fifth deadline for LWCF, and then FY twenty-seven for CPP gets released in the next couple.
Actually, at the time that I wrote the staff report, CPP had had opened the grant window, however, as of last week, it is officially open.
So we can do twenty-seven too for that.
Yeah.
That's usually not due until August, but if we get it done July.
We're ready. We'll be ready, we'll be showing you guys that soon enough.
The thing to remember about these grant programs is that unfortunately, they are slow. It takes a while.
I bank on one point one by the time it comes.
Soon.
Because they do, like, if it's anything like Henry Park's bathroom, they did the cost to do the grant, and then the cost increases.
I did have a rather large foundation that's in town reach back out to me for more information. I'm not going to give any more information than that because I don't want to jinx us, but they did say no at first with an asterisk, and then about two months later, they came back and said, well, we'd like a little more detailed information about this project. So that was about a month and a half ago. We'll see.
Hey, this is the closest Berlin has ever been to a skate park.
We're going to get it. I can see it in my head. I can see it in my head. We're going to have it.
Sorry, I just have a couple of quick questions. The land, okay, that's, the land and water conservation fund is federal?
Yes, it's the pass.
And then?
Yes.
The CPP is state, so this has, and I'm sure, this has nothing to do with the wish list that we do every year, that's program authorized, right?
Does not. That's correct. I mean, it's included as a, as a project.
We, we list these things on that list, projects that we want to get done, but they're, the wish list is that.
Is a wish.
This is what we have in mind, this is what we want to do.
Okay.
And a smaller amount of town support is going to be required for this that basically just says that you guys are good with this and everything could be okay. It's called local government authorization because actually the dollars come in to you rather than to us this way.
We'll, we'll make that part of the budget. Okay.
I think it's part of the grant applications, so I'm approving the grant applications.
It'll be a short letter, we like it, we like what we want.
We can't wait, come on, guys. All right, let's open it up to any questions or comments from the public regarding motion twenty twenty five dash thirty-four. Seeing none, let's take.
I have a motion to approve twenty twenty five thirty-four. Happy to do it. Tony, thanks for all you do to move the skate park initiative along. And I would like to say.
So a motion by council member ner, a second by Vice President Burrell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that motion twenty twenty five dash thirty-four passes unanimously.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Happy birthday, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much. The, up next, agenda item three D, motion twenty twenty five dash thirty-five, the firing EMS contracts, and it has myself, there's I can run a point on that. So what I want to do before we get into this, we had a little bit of a discussion at our last mayor and council meeting regarding, regarding the firing EMS contracts and potentially simplifying the agreements. There are the versions that are, that have come from Joe Moore in the packet, but I'm going to open it up for some discussion before we move forward on motion twenty twenty five dash thirty-five, because in speaking with my colleagues, I think there could be some other ideas floating around that I think we should discuss before we move forward. Anybody up here?
Well, I mean, I'll kick it off, why not? So when we talked last meeting, the, it's kind of interesting how it kind of went to me around full circle. But I want to go back a little bit to when we first got elected up here, and I just had some concerns about the contracts as they are, because it seemed to me that they were a little, there wasn't the same standard, and they were a little skewed, I guess, for lack of a better term, for the fire company and the EMS. For example, other organizations that receive town funding only are here once a year, and the, the fire company contract at the time had eight minutes, eight meetings and presentations and documentation and all those things that were in there originally. So it just seemed to me that it was a little unequal, I guess, if you will. I looked at the matrix report, and just as an FYI, it does say here that at the time of this report, I think it was in two thousand sixteen or eighteen, that there was no formal agreement, and that is an issue across both organizations and management risks for the town. So I'm glad that we do have something, but I also want to point out that there are some array of recommendations, they're about seventy percent fulfilled. So I think the relationship of, that we have with the fire company and EMS is getting better. Like any, any relationship, there's ebbs and flows, but I think that we are, we are in a good place, and I'm just not sure that we need the contract at all for both the fire and EMS, but recognizing that that is just my opinion, and something probably should be in place writing, I, I respect that. I do have a, not a problem, I do have a concern with just taking, I'm almost starting to lose thunder, taking this and just simplifying it if we're still going to have to review it and sign off on it every year. So I do have some other ideas on how we could probably get around that, but I think I'm going to, not around that, excuse me, how we can look at other opportunities, but I think I'll let my colleagues talk for a little bit more first.
Yeah, I'll just say, like, last meeting, I too was in the paper of eliminating. Yeah, I'll just say, like, last meeting, I too was in favor of eliminating these contracts altogether. They seem to take up a lot of time, they seem to keep changing, evolving, seems totally unnecessary. The mayor did explain to me that it's important that we have some sort of document outlining how much taxpayer dollars we're giving to the fire company in exchange for the service they provide. So I took the liberty of preparing a simplified version, basically that states just that, which I think all of you have in front of you, there's one for the fire and one for the EMS division. And it just accomplishes what we need, gets rid of a lot of the excess coverage, and it's a year-to-year agreement that would be signed by the town and the fire company, but it's crystal clear without the excess nonsense.
And Gaswell, just for everybody's education, Gaswell has reviewed the amendment that council member Nair created, and they are, they are sound, so.
Yeah, very simplified, but it says we're going to pay them so much for the service for this coming year, and that's really all we need.
Okay. Any other, I know Jack, you might have a different idea, so let's, let's talk about it as a group, too, that we have, I mean, this is really the time that we can come together to figure out what the best path is.
Well, Dave, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions, I didn't, I didn't let you know I was going to do this, so. But what would a document called, be called, if it had, like, a, like, I guess, a memorandum of agreement, or stipulations of what parties are supposed to do, exit strategies for both parties, a timeframe for regular review, things like that, what would that document be called that has the force of, I guess, law, or at least standing in?
A contract.
A contract, okay. So then, if we were to, what I was looking at was a standardized process, kind of like a, basically, a template, because the fire company and EMS are not the only organizations that receive town funds, like I mentioned earlier, but we don't see them except for once a year. And this, I'm not saying anyone, no one's less deserving or anything like that, all taxpayer dollars, regardless of amount, should be accounted for. But I was just going to throw out a, a standard, will have to be a contract instead of an agreement, that has those things that I mentioned, a timeframe for regular review, and exit pauses, I guess, if you will, for the parties, and what we want, the things that are right here. I mean, this is, I, this is great, I mean, I'm not, I'm not knocking it, but I think that if we have a standard contract form that is available to have, and this group can decide how long we review it, or, excuse me, how often we review it, I was thinking every, after every municipal election, exactly, something like that, every three years, every four years. I understand that the funding for the fire company and EMS does have the potential of changing every year. I, I think that's reflected in the budget, and, and that, to me, regardless of having signed agreements under MOUs or contracts, the budget is the budget, and that's where the money is going to go. So I, I think that that's shown there, Mayor alluded to, excuse me, alluded to it earlier, that we have a lengthy, as we should, budget process. We have a town website that has a page that shows the fire company and EMS funds and the contracts, or the existing agreements. I think that this can go a little broader, and we have our other organizations and our other vendors that this might, this might also apply to.
So let me make sure, and, and what I'm hearing is that the, whatever the agreement may be, would not include the funding levels, but it would say that in exchange for town funds, the, as a grant, that the department agrees that any funding that is given is designed to cover a fiscal year's service. So the agreement might always stand, and likely wouldn't change, but the funding level would be set in the municipal budget rather than in an agreement?
Yes, I mean, that really wouldn't change, because we do that now in the work sessions and the budget, but it's just, it's just here, and I understand the, the needs.
Kind of, we give what we can.
Yes, and that's what we do. So I just, when I said earlier, and I don't want to rant on, but when I said earlier when it goes, it went full circle, is, and Jay and I have been agreed that, that it didn't feel like the contract as it is now was applicable. So to just tone it down to a page and a half and still review it every year, it just seemed counterintuitive to what the goal was.
Is there a way to clean that up, like, take the shorter version, and to say, basically, anything that we give in the year, in the municipal budget, is all that we can give, and that funding level is for 12 months of service?
I, I think, I think that would be overcomplicated.
Okay.
I, I don't see how you can do a one-size-fits-all contract for BFC and EMS and any other group to give money, because these are unique organizations. We're, we're going to have to meet with them one page at a time. Not, maybe, maybe, maybe not every year, but we're going to have to meet with them one page at a time. And, and I, I think, you know, Jay, Jay kept in the two meetings in his one-and-a-half-page contract, I, I don't think you can simplify it more than that. And I don't think you can one-size-fits-all an agreement between these two groups, and, for instance, Worcester County. I mean, that, that, I, I don't think that would make any sense.
So, now we've spent another 16 minutes on firing EMS, and we've just gone full circle. Because if we are going to assign a thing every year, there's no need to change it. I mean, I'm not arguing, I'm just, I'm telling you.
Okay, I think, um, maybe, maybe spend one more minute. We're at the bottom of the ninth inning, you know, this, we're not even, we're not even meeting again this fiscal year. I personally think we follow a similar path, I like Jay's, when he drafted up for next year. So, I believe that we're here, we're at this point now, right or wrong, mistakes, not mistakes, but I'll make a motion that we approve the contracts. Two changes.
Before we do that, let's just handle all discussions first.
Steve, I would point out that we would, if, if Jay's version is adopted, we would be meeting in September 35.
But the fiscal year?
This fiscal year, we would not have another, you are going to be FY26, we have to do.
So.
Well, you're correct, it'd be changing the game at death.
I don't like the optics of a no vote tonight on a contract for us.
I hear you on that. But I think that if we do that, I think that what this body should do is send those modified versions and say, this is what we're looking at for FY27, but, do you have some other?
Yes, I, I just have a couple of questions. My first question is, does the fire department have a contract with Worcester County?
Not to wind up on a close one.
Maybe they don't have a contract with Worcester County.
I, I don't believe they do.
Last I checked, Berlin is located in Worcester County. So therefore, I submit to use, and, and to die, that, that, would it be improper for Berlin to assist Worcester County with the funding of the fire department? Could not we, I've been sitting here of all time, and, and I cannot think of one issue, including Tyson property, that has taken up more time than this relationship with the Berlin Fire Department. And I read something today that really put me over the edge, when a signature has been withheld, waiting on, I think, a fee from the town of Berlin for $500 related to a annual event help here in the town. Would it be improper for, and this is consideration not for this year, because like Steve said, this is the last inning, but would it be improper for the town of Berlin to, to supplement the county funding of the fire and EMS departments located in the town of Berlin, by having a pass through?
From us to them.
From us to the county.
Correct.
And, and that pass through can assist the county in continuing service to the county of Worcester.
And one thing, to answer your question with an idea, and the one thing that I've said to Natalie and to Mary many times, I would even be willing to say to the county, we're not going to make an FY27 grant request from you. You keep that money, in lieu of you negotiating with the fire company to provide service. This year, it's worth $550,000, and let them keep the town of Berlin's taxpayer money.
Even if, even if that amount has to be enhanced by the town of Berlin?
We can figure that out.
We can figure that out, because folks, I have seen the relationship with the town of Berlin and Berlin Fire Department go to a new low of what I read today. I do believe that, I do believe it is irreparable, and I do believe having a pass through from the town of Berlin to the county, to Berlin Fire Department, would really clean things up, and, and put us, I'm talking about the town of Berlin, in a more positive situation going forward.
And to add to that, I'm not saying that this is the right size for Worcester County, but if you look at the state of Maryland, to have municipalities funding fire and EMS services is abnormal, right? It is largely, when you look at the 23, 24 jurisdictions across the state, they're managed by the county. So I don't think that your idea is that far off, and I think it's definitely worth a conversation with the county. I would also say that to council member Horace's point, when we've been in our little meetings with the fire company, they've already invested the infrastructure into meeting with the chiefs and to evaluating the framework, they have the funding formulas, they already have the work. Why are we trying to reinvent the wheel? Why don't we just partner with them, as you've mentioned, and maybe have a pass through from us to them for funding local stuff? So, that's definitely something to, to discuss.
Just a question on that, because I believe that would require more of the town funds, because they use a formula, the one of the county.
Yes and no, I mean, but the other side is, is that you can still, I mean, keep in mind that the taxpayers of Berlin pay county taxes and pay municipal taxes, and if we say, because each year, we come up with our requests to the county, if we were to pitch it as, hey, look, we're not making a request, in lieu of our request, we want you to, to take this, I think that that could almost be pretty fair.
And just like Jack just said moments ago, when it comes to funding the fire department, we, the best council and the town of Berlin, has always done the best we could do at that time. And whether there is a formula that the county uses or not, we would still continue to do the best that we can do at that time.
So, so say we hypothetically would loan that idea, which, I mean, I said, cut out the middleman, because that's basically the role we're playing, we get the pass through, and we pretty much turn the check all of it, and then some over to Berlin Fire, right now?
The grant that we make to the fire company exceeds what we give from the county.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, because we turn over the grant, and then we continue to add. So my question then is, and I love the idea of cutting the check directly to them, what happens when they say, mm, that's not enough? With whom would they say that?
That would be a negotiation between the town and the county?
Okay. Not to double dip, but, Dave, has there been any, since we have received these from the EMS and the BSE, have they submitted any requests or amendments to what is here?
I, I did, I did submit emails to, I know, the mayor and Mary, I thought I sent it to everybody. Yeah, I spoke to Joe Moore, and I spoke, and the explanation that was given was that the, the membership would not allow Mr. Fitzgerald to make the changes that, to what I consider minor changes that we had requested.
And that was the thing?
And, and there was a follow-up email from Mr. Fitzgerald, which I also sent along to everyone, which indicated that he was going to try to get his group at the night's meeting to allow him to sign the contract without the language that they sent it over. And he requested that the mayor ask the council to give him approval to sign those contracts without that language in.
That would have been my recommendation, no matter what.
Can you repeat specifically what that language was?
I, I haven't.
We're going to, we're going to talk about it.
I don't have it. So it's page 34 of the packet, number two.
Section two.
Yeah, under section two, number two. The fire company's requesting 150 annual for buyer and rescue capital, and the town of buyers here unable to fill this request.
So we're striking number two, in the proposed motion, the motion might include striking number two?
Yeah.
Yes, that's what I requested, that he delete that number two entire.
And then in the EMS one, section two, number two.
Dave's number?
Uh, 38 of the packet, strike the annual request to 75,000.
The last sentence of item two.
Yep, and that's, that's all I asked them to do. We need to do it.
We're keeping the 15, we are striking, the motion may include to strike just the last sentence, section two, item two, in the EMS, got it?
So I'm not saying, I don't disagree with really anything that's been set up here, honestly, I just feel like it's the time where we are. Listen, if we, if we, the county, that's very interesting, and I think that is something that we should pursue, it could actually potentially be precedent setting in Worcester County. We're not alone in the struggles of funding fire EMS services at the town, so I would like that, of course, but my motion tonight would be to remove the parts that we just, to allow the mayor to move forward with signature power, removing the two stated sentences. I can say that again if you'd like.
I got it. So I have a motion by council member, during the question. Well, Steve, your, your concern that we're up against the wire here, but really, what is the concern? If we were to vote no on this tonight, we wouldn't have a contract in place, what would happen?
I just think the optics of that are, are not healthy for this relationship to continue, honestly.
As opposed to then saying, okay, we're going to simplify the contract here, here's what we want you to sign?
I think it's been a one-sided conversation for a moment.
It has been, yeah.
Yeah, so that, I just think for the sense of collaboration, you know, for trying to maintain the relationship, that's really my point, I think. I just was under the impression we should have a new contract, I feel like we should have a contract in place before fiscal year starts. And, you know, without any sort of feedback from them, or, you know, I don't know, their meeting tonight as well, maybe they wouldn't meet again, I just feel like... I just feel like we should move forward with what we have before us and then either use your framework, moving forward and, and explore it on county.
I've got two items already for our first meeting, county funding, not town, and modified contract. Those are two agenda items when we meet with them.
The fire.
The fire company. Yep.
I would add too, that striking the language that's just been discussed doesn't change the terms of the contract, it doesn't change how much they're getting paid or how, what term their, what their dates of service are. All it does is remove language that speaks to, what's the word I'm looking for, Dave?
How about inappropriate for, for contracts? That's exactly what I told Mr. Moore, these two sentences.
They don't, yeah, they have their own terms.
Because we did not agree to that. They're inappropriate to be in a contract.
Right.
It's that simple.
I'm going to second Steve's motion.
So I have a motion by council member Green and a second by council member Horace. Motion 2025-35, the approval of Berlin Fire and Berlin EMS contracts with the change on page two of the fire agreement, striking section two, item two. And.
In its entirety.
In its entirety, thank you. And in the EMS agreement, on page three, section two, item two, striking the last sentence that reads the annual request with 75,000. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Let the record reflect that motion 2025-35 passed unanimously. I did not ask for public comment, I apologize for that. Anybody that wants to address the hearing council, I apologize that it's after the time. Okay.
We will be discussing the other two issues.
Yes, and let's, so Sarah, I haven't noted on my end, but let's make sure that we, make sure the fire company is aware that we want to discuss the idea of the town passing our funding to the county and the county fully funding the fire and EMS services each year. And we also want to discuss the potential of the modified contract. And what I would do is even send them, I think you have digital copies of Jay's? If not, pass them along to Sarah. And then we'll share them with the fire company so that we have that front and center.
Mayor, can I add another item?
Go ahead.
Right now, we, county sends us AMOS grant distribution as well.
We want them to handle that.
Which we, in the same day process the check back to the fire. It's passed through, been established years and years. So I think there is no need for us to receive that. And then the town becomes responsible for reporting this grant back to the county.
Just so that, AMOS, A-M-O-S.
Yes.
And it's a grant that we receive from the county and then we just in turn cut the check to the fire company.
Right. That should go directly to the fire company. It's, there's no.
I agree with that. All right.
Because of the change in version, I'm going to redo the motion rather than.
Perfect. Thank you. And then, all right, so agenda item 3D passed unanimously, thank you. Agenda item 3E, motion 2025-26, the approval of the FY26 contracts, and our town administrator, Mary Volons, can review.
Most of these are pretty much the same that you see annually with, with some tweaks according to pricing. The, there's one completely new addition to EK law, which is legal services for the planning department. It is included in the budget, but we're adding it to the annual list of contracts.
Any questions for Mary?
Also, was the code enforcement Tyler technology?
Yes, yes, you're correct. Those are, those are new modules that we're purchasing, yes. Not the contract to Tyler itself, but the modules.
Yeah, I just had a, thank you, Mary. I had emailed Mary the question that she would like to be approved, but it was about Maryland Delaware, the annual lease agreements of 20,000, approximately $20,000. Well, could, could we explain again? And Mary replied, it was a required license agreement to have her utilities under or over the railroad tracks. So that then would include stormwater, hall birds and whatnot?
I cannot speak to that specifically. Typically, we're, what refers to water lines, sewer lines and electric. I don't know about stormwater.
Oh, okay.
And then just for adification.
I'd say that they've not, but I'm not sure.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't think so.
So then, okay.
Well, the stormwater benefits them as well, so it's, it's not quite the same thing.
Right, but I don't want you to choose this, but if we needed to do something like that hall bird, is that on us? I mean, it was on us. Is it on us? Do we have it in there? I don't know. Is it? It goes back to last meeting, nevermind.
EMK law, since that is a new one, you'll see it for 50,000. Know that it is not a straight 50,000. It is billed like some of these others. That's just our cap that we have for FY26.
Not true.
Okay. That was my question.
It's not a street, cut the check and.
Hey, how many times? So she would be present at the planning commission meetings?
For, so she might not be present at all. We're going to let the planning director and the planning commission kind of determine what they might need. And if there's something coming up, then they can, they can follow those services.
I just have a question. Why is Jay contacting the department?
We'll get there, but we're not there yet. That's the next one.
That's not a contract?
It's a brand new contract.
It's a new one for the dynamics. Any other questions regarding FY26 contract? Okay. Seeing none, let's open up the public comment regarding motion 2025-36. Okay. Seeing none, we'll take action by the council.
Motion to approve 2025-36.
So a motion by council member Horace, second by council member Nichols. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Let the record reflect that FY26 contract passed unanimously. Thank you. Up next is agenda item 3F, that's motion 2025-37, the approval of a parking mobile contract. And it has council members Green and Earl on there in line. So it has the, with the strategic plan, parking was on there. We created the parking subgroup, which includes council members Nurr and Green, as well as town administrators, town attorney and myself. And when we did that, we were divvying out some work. And some of the work was somebody running point with Park Mobile. Jay was designated to run point on that and reach out to them. That's why they have him on here, but once it's approved, it will be stripped for the town administrator. So it's just the way they submitted the paperwork. But once it's approved, it would be changed to Mary being the point. Does that make sense?
It just speaks to your advice.
It's just, yeah, it's not.
It would be changed.
Yeah, that part will be changed. Okay, so turn it over to Jay and Steve to run point on that.
Well, I would have to say, we're getting very close to getting this parking lot in place and finalized and in operation soon. One of the things we wanted to do is make it a paid parking lot. So I contacted a well-known company called Park Mobile, which is an app-based parking system. So basically, you set up a fee structure, it can be different at different times, for different sets, it can be one price, for other times it can be another. And people go on their app and they pay accordingly. In return, the town has, is given, or given the right to use their sophisticated software, which tracks all of the amount of money coming in and also lets the officers know who was paid, who hasn't paid. They can check license plates easily, they can check out their lot. So it's a good system. The fees are very basic. Basically, they get 20 cents per transaction and 3% of the total transaction. So.
Paying the town for that.
The town, no.
So for $100, they get 20 cents per day.
Well, no. Basically, what happens, if someone, if we set the rate at a dollar per hour, the customer is charged a dollar forty. So they, that 40 cents goes to Park Mobile as well, in addition to the 23 cents. And then we get the balance of that. So it can be profitable for them, profitable for us. That money would go to a parking lot fund, which would not just serve as that parking lot, but help with other parking situations in town. There's no upfront fees. It's an easy contract to get into. We can cancel it anytime. They provide signage. Yeah, there'd be, on the contract, there was a $1,000, what do they call it?
Implementation.
I actually emailed her today, my contact, and said, you never disclosed this, I asked you to move. So they haven't agreed to it. But I did ask them to move. But they provide all the signage, everything you need to get on the lot.
And the nice part about Park Mobile, you can travel anywhere. That's pretty much the game in town. And they have the kiosk available. I know some of the other local places have installed those, but then have said, you know, we're not going to do the kiosk route. But Jay explained to us, there is the ability to call, text, you can pay various different ways with this. You don't have to just have a smartphone that does that. So kiosk, I know you had your flip phone for years. You can still pay it apart.
I can call, you're the park.
He's got a dual flip phone. We're asking.
I know, I know.
This one actually is on the.
All right, any questions regarding Park Mobile?
Well, no surprise, I have Park Mobile. But I do, I have, this is great, I mean, I use Park Mobile and I think it's awesome for what we're getting at. Probably down the line, but I guess I'm just asking broadly of the parking lot group. Have, is there an idea of what you're, of what we're thinking about charging for parking?
Good question.
So we did come up with a couple of different scenarios. So let's say during the day.
During the week?
No, during the week. We may not put any rate, maybe a zero rate. Weekends, you can charge dollars, $1.50 per hour. A bench, you might charge four, $4.50 an hour.
Your regular nights, like, just like you're saying, weekdays, zero, but, but we could set it at one time.
At night time, like, we start late and then the lot would close at a certain time. There'd be no overnight parking.
But we'd have, but the town would have the ability to fluctuate with the changing.
Town has control of the rates and can change it on the fly. So people on the app can see, okay, the town, oh, this isn't bad, they're charging $4 an hour at Park here.
Like Halloween.
Yeah.
Christmas parade, Halloween.
Is that part of the custom develop?
No, no, that's all included. The software is provided to the town and that's where you set the rates.
The custom development, like if you look at, like bigger cities, they have them zone. So I think that's more what they're after on the custom development. This is going to be one of the highlights.
So it shouldn't be. So the other, the other question I had, and again, just throwing it out there, you had mentioned police enforcing those who overstay their, their time allotted. So if that's the route that it, that it goes, how will, will there maybe, will there be a way for them, usually they look at license plates?
Yeah, so the, let's say it was a code enforcement option. They can just go through the parking lot and plug in a license plate.
On, on Park Mobile?
Yes.
On the back, back end.
On the back end.
Yeah, we have to work through the kings of who's going to do the enforcement side, but it does, in Ryan's experience, it's all pretty, code enforcement handles it.
No, they have their own parking enforcement.
Okay. And then.
Police department certainly, it will write that agent. All right. I probably don't have a good kind of strategy.
I think it will be important they communicate clearly with Jimmy for what a quick bit installation, I mean, Jim for that matter, I don't know what the.
The only thing they should need is a sign.
Okay, is that?
That's my knowledge.
Great signs placed around.
But not infrastructure. It's literally like a road sign. You just scan.
How will the rates be communicated?
Well, yours would be about $50. No, they'll be on the app.
You could also put something on the sign where you can change things out.
But you run the risk of it not being viewed.
Keep in mind, it takes personnel to do this.
I would stick to the apps.
Well, I mean, even the going into the lot and checking if the cars are registered, it takes people.
There is a transaction demand fee, 40 cents, is that?
That's paid by the customer. So that's charged to the customer. So if we set the rate at a dollar, the customer actually gets charged a dollar for it. And they're notified.
And is it going to go through their credit card system?
Yeah, and then they cut us.
So they just cut a feature?
No credit card fees with them.
So we're not going to be involved in collecting?
It's kind of like speed cameras. We should just get the check.
Right. Is the, is the parking lot going to require lighting?
I don't know yet.
Yeah, cars parked there at nighttime, you gotta have some kind of.
I think that we'll probably try at this point to do minimal lighting on site. And if anything, it might be more security lighting. So we'll, we'll figure that part out right now.
And that, that was a concern when this was discussed with the planning commission about introducing too much bright, intrusive light to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, thank you. Thanks for putting this number up, keeping me on track. So anyone from the public that would like to address the American Council regarding motion 2025-37. Seeing none, we will take action by the council. So a motion by Vice President for us, second by Councilmember Horace. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Let the record reflect that agenda item 3F, motion 2025-37, the approval of Park Mobile contract, passed unanimously.
Go ahead.
I will not be getting your signature this evening pending that there's a correction to the schedule.
Yeah, we need to use the council. Work with Mary, need that checked.
Just a little bit for Jimmy, who, if you're here. So Jimmy has been on the line chair of this planning for the parking lot. Just if you could provide an update to the community, you know, how things are going on your end, I know we were taking a grassy mobile and turning it into a parking lot. We have signs. We did come for the planning commission, Jimmy kind of ran, ran the meeting and announced a board of courtesy site plan presentation before them. Took some of their concerns, you know, parking lots is one of the things that was in the contract and things like that. But if you could just provide a general update and put you on the spot.
So we are prepared to start placing poles in the ground this week, no later than next week. We'll start at the latest. We have all, we have a site plan to just try to generally park 80 cars in there for the bathtub races. That's our goal in the next week or two. Generally put up signs, enter signs, exit signs, no exit signs areas, and just try to keep a general flow of in, off, and west and exiting to Washington around Debraun. Also have, we've been looking at some extra cones and barrier, barricades and barrels to place along the street to help, we might limit a little bit of the on-street parking to provide, one, a path on West Street so multiple vehicles can travel on West Street, not just the single lane, which could happen if too many people are all in the street. So we looked at that. We've also looked at, we have some event parking signs that we will be able to deploy between Baker directing people down to West Street and also on the southern end around Jefferson, you know, saying that there's event parking. So we're hoping to funnel or lead to that parking lot to get people in that lot. I think it will benefit anybody coming from the north, who are already going down West Street. We have signs that'll say parking event ahead and we'll be able to direct them right into the parking lot. Because you're going down west anyway, it's too broad, that hopefully will lead going into Broad to Gay and around Jefferson. So we're hoping that people see it and proceed right away to that spot, so.
So one of the planning, one of the planning commission action items was the restricting parking. So right now on West Street from Broad to the Robbins Nest House, no parking between signs. And Sunday, particularly at the farmer's market, I mean, there's no way a fire truck was getting down that. It's, we talked about the importance of not have, not allowing parking on West Street when the slot opens. There was discussion, planning commission, I believe, on whether or not that was an ordinance requirement, whether or not the police department needed to be involved as far as input. So what, that is something, if we have a two-week goal, you know, something we certainly should talk about. And I think it's important. I do think it's actually a safety issue, it's kind of, you see it on events, but then we really can't have free parking right there, blah, blah.
People are going to take free over eight every day.
So how do we?
I don't, it doesn't. We can, we can place no parking signs there without action at this level. Is that, we've done that in the past, correct?
I believe so. We certainly do it during events.
I've never drafted an ordinance.
Yeah, we've handled that before.
You just advised that it's going to be no parking on it and it's not to put up?
During a period, yeah.
But we're talking about.
All the time.
Yeah.
The parking on West Street.
On West Street.
From Broad to Washington.
To Washington.
I was gonna say, I didn't know off the top of my head what the parking is like.
Yeah.
But we get, in front of people's homes, I don't know. They certainly wanna go down that road.
There's roughly ten people that, actually six, the residents down there, that's Jeff to work out something. And the rest are doing the business days, which read up to ten people, all the way up and down. Right. But like you said... You're rich, I mean, there's the grassy area where some of the residents live right across the street park. We asked the planning commission, that, planning commissioner that lives right there, who did agree to join our committee as well. What had, what his thoughts were on that, he seemed to, kinda speaking of his neighbors, just go ahead, not allow that to continue.
I would have, I would say it would need to be west and Washington. People will walk five blocks to park for free rather than paying and walk two blocks.
Yeah, we have a planning commissioner that lives on Washington Street, does it seem to him, so.
But I think that the other side of that is too, with bringing this online, we don't have to have it all done right away.
No.
Right? So, I don't want us to just blanket and say, "This is gonna be no parking," without a little bit of analysis. So, maybe Chief and Jimmy can take a look and see what's going on in that area as far as regular parking. And we can bring something to the group to discuss in the first meeting in July. I don't think one event's gonna hurt us, as far as, we're probably not gonna have it paid in two weeks anyway, so.
Right. Yeah, I understand. I'd forget that. It'd be nice if it wasn't, couldn't park on West Street, it's a lot.
I agree with that. But I think we can buy ourselves until the lot may be open, and we might not have adjusted the parking on the streets. But July one, like, when we start our first mayor and council meeting, we can probably have that fruitful discussion about what it'll look like. I don't think the loss of revenue as far as that goes, public safety, I understand.
Yeah.
But I don't want us to blanket something without getting the full perspective.
Right, and I understand that. I guess I'm trying to balance the, we are trying to rush to get this open. I just feel like, I mean, it's Sunday, it's a solid, it's early.
Yeah, it's, it's a bit of a...
And I just worried about people being able to get into the lot, frankly, to make, I know I wouldn't be able to make that current a truck to get into the lot if people are parking where they are parking now.
Okay. So, maybe, and I think that maybe what we could do in the interim is that wherever the entry and egress points are, let's make sure at least a good manageable distance so people can get in and out, is clearly denoted as no parking. And then, we'll aim for the first meeting in July to have a more comprehensive discussion about the narrow streets that are in that area that people might pursue as opposed to a paid lot.
So, what, okay, so we're looking at no parking on West from Broad to Washington on the right side, and then Washington on the right going around out back to our right.
On both sides, all, all, all of West?
No, I, no, I know that, but just that section. You're, we're not, we're not...
Oh, Washington?
Yeah. Well, no, on West, we're looking at both sides, no parking from Broad to Washington, right?
It's not going further south.
Right, and then from, from Washington to around the ice plant, no parking on both sides.
Yes. Yeah, so the planning committee, Pete Cosby, he would like for there not to be parking on Washington Street either.
I know.
And he knows that can't happen. Unless you wanna take houses off of that street. That's why we have parts on one side of the street now.
Okay, so Washington will have...
And it might have to just be residential, like, we might have to pursue that. But that's why I don't wanna see us make a decision tonight. The other side is that we gotta be cognizant that if we take parking away and restrict it from Broad to Washington, they're just gonna move down a little bit. Right, we gotta learn to have a better approach.
Five blocks for free parking rather than pay and walk two.
So, we gotta make sure we're looking at this. Now, we don't have to go to an extreme. We might have to come up with a solution and then probably figure out the pinch points as we go, but.
Can we, would it be to, if we, to the Councilor Green's point, can we say that we are planning, like, effective July one?
Well, first meeting in July, we would have to...
Well, no, but I'm saying for just a, for, for, okay, so then July fifteenth or whatever, can we say that that'll be the day that they will, we're anticipating track parking changes?
Correct.
Because I think we should give a little heads up.
That's fine.
So, I guess, I'm not making a motion or anything, but I think that if we have a date that we can set with people saying, hey, this is the target date that parking's gonna change, FYI.
And it would be mid, if you can use the fifteen, but mid to latter part of July, there will be parking changes highly likely in the areas of Washington Street and West Street.
And I think if we, we can get that out on social media and stuff, I don't think, right now.
Let's get an idea of kind of what it looks like first, and then...
So, I'd rather prepare people.
But, and the other side is that we'll, once we get an idea of what we're doing, keep in mind, we've got like three weeks, almost four weeks before we meet again and release the packet. If we can get a general sense of what the parking changes might look like, maybe we get something out earlier to, to your point, to notify the public so that they can...
I just don't, I don't want to be, I don't want to...
The parking changes, will they not have to come back in front of you guys?
It's more or less just to have a discussion.
For the chief to have a discussion, and then, will they not have to be like a policy?
They just have to make a decision?
But we would have that decision under, that discussion in the first meeting of July, and I'm saying that the fifteenth would be the, the day.
It would be better to have like a staff-level recommendation for the first meeting in July, rather than staff having the burden without public input, I think.
And we're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to put signs up the next day. And, because depending on the verage, I might have to order some of them other signs that we won on that street. So, I understand what Mr. Jack is saying that, hey, we wanna give people, but it could be another two weeks or three weeks till we actually get signage up. Because some of the signs, depending on the verage, I might not have, because I don't stock fifty-dollar signs. So, and that's be, that would give them time to say, hey, we're gonna do this on this side of the street or not this side of the street. So, yeah.
I think we've asked for grace in this situation, you know, through this process, because we are trying to address, we believe it's a community issue. So, I think we continue to ask for grace as we move forward, and, you know, it's all with hard work and, I think, dedication to the cause, so just gotta...
I've got one more thought I'd like to kind of consider. Harrison Avenue, a lot of people may come into that parking lot through Harrison Avenue or leave that way. Right now, there's really no line striping on that street. It's pretty much the last one you drive down Harrison Avenue at certain times. Is there anything we could do to get that straight?
I don't think it's wide enough. I saw that comment on We Are the One Too. But I don't think the street's wide enough for them.
But how about through the area?
I don't think it's wide enough.
I think it's perceived to be wider and not be wide. I think people perceive that you're into, you're into what they have for parking and egress from the shop.
Yeah, they actually have parking spaces all facing in, in the parking lot all the way down the side. So, you would have to go ahead and not only do center lines, you have to do sidelines also. Do it correctly.
That's why, it has to be a certain standard, doesn't it?
It's not really a town road. If we have a use agreement for it, correct if I'm wrong, but it's not really a town road.
Yes, I think yours drives in property.
And most town roads aren't straight. And they're wider.
I know.
When you're talking about old 400s in these small towns, they often don't need modern standards. That's just...
It is a very heavily traveled road.
Yeah, it is. You know, what about that?
Maybe it isn't too much. It's one of the more, well, used roads, I think in Brooklyn.
It's a freeway.
It's not really.
It's a freeway freeway.
All right, let's see, so... Let's move on to agenda item 3G, motion 2025-38, that's approval of the nominee, nominated board, commission, and committee members. And in here, you'll see each fifty-three of the packet. There are two nominations listed for the ethics commission. You have an amendment to this. We're gonna add one new member for the HDC, and they're gonna be an alternate. And that's Lisa Doyle. We'll get the information to everybody as well, if you have any questions. But we did receive notification of the vacancy there, so for streamlining purposes, we'd like to add Lisa Doyle to that.
So, are we, are we gonna have, if each of them boards the missions, are they all going to have it all true?
Some have it already in place. If we have higher demand and good quality applicants, you may see us ask for that. But we're kind of taking that out of, out of pop.
Got it.
But with ethics, we have Ben Allen. Ben's actually here in the audience and a frequent attendee of our mayor and council meeting. So, thank you for applying. And then Brittany Lindsay, and both of those will be for a three-year term on ethics. And then Lisa Doyle, the alternate for HDC, would be a two-year term, I think. I'm pretty sure it's a two-year term.
Three is three year.
HDC's three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, three-year term, and that says the alternate. Any questions regarding this? See, oh, well, any public comment? Seeing none, okay, thank you, Joe.
I'll make a motion to approve the nomination, the nominated person for motion 2025-38.
With the amendment?
With the amendment of the HDC option.
Thank you. So, a motion by Councilmember Oris, a second by Councilmember Nurr, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, let the record reflect the motion 2025-38, passed unanimously. Thank you. And up next is agenda item 3H, and that's resolution 2025-04, reschedule revisions for FY twenty-six through FY thirty, and that's town administration, Mary Boland's running for it.
Included in your packet was my staff report regarding fee revisions. What I'm proposing at this point is the adoption of this schedule, which includes updates of annual increases every year from now until FY twenty-three. And the reason for that is similar, so we don't have to keep coming back.
Revisiting.
However, at the same time, I am developing an RFP for a, it started off primarily as an impact fee study. But thanks to a suggestion from Kate actually, decided to incorporate a more comprehensive fee study into the same thing. It encompasses a number of things. It just makes sure that RFPs are sensible and defensible, if it comes down to it. The course of developing the RFP, a lot of information from surrounding towns. And while it was useful to look at, it showed me that we're just all over the place. There are some that are high, there are some that are low, there are some that are calculated differently in different towns or called by different names. So, it was hard to, to make a good comparison. So, included in this year's budget was funding for an impact fee study, and I'm going to include the comprehensive fee study as well. In the RFP, I'm going to break it into two parts, so that we can eliminate the general fee portion of it, should the budget call for it. The impact fees are really the important thing, to get those nailed down. There are two things that were added to the fee schedule this time. We realized that there, while there are fees for appearing before the Board of Appeals and the planning commission, there were no fees to appear before the Historic District Commission. So, there is a moderate fee added here, and those are essentially intended to capture just overheads, more or less, staff expense. The intent, of course, of all of these fees is to keep it so that the taxpayer is not paying the general cost of these services. The services are being paid by the people using them. So, that's why the addition of the Historic District Commission application fee or appearance and review fee. There was also a new fee identified for annexation requests. These would be annexation requests being generated, obviously, from outside of the town. I think that once upon a time, they were on the fee schedule, and I think they just got lost. But they're set at the same rate as a resembling request.
Now, any, any objection, I know that we have to be able to defend our fees, but if our impact fees haven't been changed since 'oh five, is there any reason we can't put them on the same escalator? And still work toward the adjustment, or do we really need to be...
You need to get them assessed and, and set according to defensible measures. After that, I don't see any reason we couldn't.
If I'm not mistaken, isn't the fee in the ordinance?
Yes, that's another thing that has to change, either way. I mean, even if you cut the impact fee the way it is, you should still take it out of the ordinance, but not the fee itself, but the fact that it is codified that it's two thousand dollars.
Yeah, so, I mean, what I'm saying is that you can't just change it on this schedule because it's in the ordinance, how much it is. So, we have to amend the ordinance.
All right. So, any discussion regarding the fee schedule?
Well, Mary, I just have one, and I don't, this one, I don't know if this is kind of my, but I guess that's page fifty-eight for under park facility reservation. It, it looks like now it's up fifty percent, you know, they get half the deposit back. And as it goes up in this tentative schedule, it stays thirty-five?
Yeah.
Can we just make it?
We could, we could make it fifty. I would say that the expense of upkeep on the park is, that the portion that's being returned is intended to cover pretty much electric usage. It's not intended to recover the whole, to cover the whole thing. But we can certainly leave it at that fifty.
Well, I'm easy enough to, I mean, not just mean, but if it's going to their way.
Well, my, my question is, is if there's a park facility reservation, I've always thought that a resident should pay a certain fee, and anybody that wants to use it that's not a resident should pay a different fee. Because really, the residents are already paying their taxes, and I think that fee should be low.
Okay.
But I think that people that are wanting to use our parks from outside of town should pay a higher fee. That's my thought, I mean...
It puts a, it puts a bit, a little more burden on, on staff, but it's not significant.
But I think that really, I want more citizens to use our parks. And if you're coming from outside of town, you wanna use it, then you should try a little bit more.
And I have no idea what that ratio means.
I don't, I don't either. I'm just throwing stuff around.
Well, I mean, if that's, if that's, I mean, I, I kinda like that idea, I mean, then we can just keep this, we can just keep this as non-residential then, right?
Yeah, they could make the residential one, like...
Give me a, give me a number.
Ten dollars. I mean, I think it should be very...
Well, I think it should be more than that, simply because there is an expensive wall. There's trash, there's cleanup, there's electric.
Twenty-five?
The reason people research it, I'm sorry, it's because they either have a birthday party, so it's a larger group gathering. That's why we have a fee to recover any damages down to the benches. So, the residential part and non-residential, most of them, I can say, it's all people who live here in the county. The visitors would not come in the local fifty and reserve hour port.
I mean, it's, I just like if...
The other, the other, well, we'll tell me on this as well, the other reason for returning a portion of the fee.
Chief is from Michigan though.
The other, the other reason for returning a portion of the fee is to encourage them to clean when they leave. Because we do check it afterwards, and if it's been left in mess, we have denied that refund.
I just, I mean, for me, if we had a resident, like the little boy here, Vincent, that remember his time in a park...
He appreciates you calling.
A young man, Vincent. The, that has a memory of the park. If, if we have a child that has a memory of a park having a birthday party there, I'm all for that, as a resident, you know what I mean? Keep it low. I, I want more events in our parks. But if you're coming out of town, you should pay, you should pay.
That, that is up to you all.
I agree with that.
I say ten dollars for residential, keep your fee schedule for non-residential.
Do non-residential, that's it.
Get the back.
No, just make it, ten dollars, ten dollars is the fee. You don't get anything else.
Well, right.
Okay, but then, once they're upset, to get, to make sure they clean up after events as well.
If they don't, then their blacklisted renter park? No, is that a bad... I never said my idea was great. I just said that I had it.
I think if you're gonna be like an Ocean Pines resident, you probably know someone in Berlin, and I think what's gonna happen is just, hey, can you rent the park for me? I wanna get it for the, you know, I think it's just...
You're messing up your names associated.
We have gotten no pushback on this. We are loving...
I can let it lie. I'm just telling you mine.
So, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm doing a compromise. I do agree with, with that. So, why don't we, for now, go with this as is, and then we kind of take this time to give some data.
Yeah, we're gonna consult with somebody, and you gotta get them to...
Exactly, exactly. So, do you want me to leave it at the thirty-five mark or fifty-fifty?
Well, this year, it's not gonna really change anyway, like, it's...
No, it won't change this year. Yeah, and that's part of it, part of the resolution. This doesn't lock you into the next five years. You can still make changes if there's any issue.
Whatever you go with. Out of sorts, it's the long-term rental fee at fifteen dollars per unit, while a short-term rental is two hundred dollars.
I agree, it's way out of line.
We increased that recently too, for the long-term rental.
We did.
We run over.
To what?
Probably from ten to fifteen. Agreed.
Should be comparable to the, uh, short-term rent.
That's similar inspection, correct?
But, yeah.
No? Why not?
Because then we don't have it as required. You're getting into a whole different area of the code now.
But yeah, I agree.
You said a good rate for that?
They throw a number here. My number, I would say a hundred dollars.
Now do keep in mind that a short-term rental is a one, the per house. It's not like per unit. I'm, I'm only putting this out there. If you had a house with four apartments and, right, it's per. Or if you had forty units and some of the larger apartment complexes, I think the one that has.
Well, how about we need, can we get a little, uh, sense of what everybody else is charging that and revisit that? We pass it now. We can amend it, right?
Sure, yeah. You could amend it at any point.
So why don't we, why don't we pass the fifteen now and in the interim, let's take a look and see what everybody else has. Jack, get some, get some data. I like it. But fifteen, know that it's a discount and it's likely going to change. Likely going to change.
And just one other note, I was happy to see the recommendation. We, I believe we doubled the business license fee a couple of years ago. I think that's wise to, um, because we didn't have, you know, some who was back on that initially. Um, but going higher than that, I think it's, um, probably wise to stay the course on that from now. That was a big increase.
Sir.
We're talking about a lot, but we're not changing anything. That's the summary. Okay, let's see. Any discussion from the public? So let's get a motion.
Motion to approve twenty twenty-five. So a motion by Councilmember Nurr, a second by Councilmember Oris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect the resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero-four passed unanimously. Unchanged. Thank you. Up next, agenda item four, reports, county administrator departmentals.
Uh, just a couple of quick things. This Friday, the office will close again for records, um, stuff. And next Thursday, most town offices will be closed. That's June nineteenth in recognition of June.
Any questions for Mary or regarding the departmentals that are in fact?
Yeah.
So, um, this is just two, two things. The, is the, um, the closure and the documenting that you're going to be running into?
As, as it can be, as I, I think I said this at the last meeting, we're, we're just not getting the information back from the Maryland State Archives that we need. But we're trying to work around that, um, by looking at some of the other certified records retention schedules available on the archive, archives website. Towns submit their schedules. Unfortunately, what we found is that these certified schedules will have different things for the same records.
But folks.
It's a frustrating process.
But as far as staff, am I getting offices?
We are, we are. Yes.
It's more just like organizing, figuring out what we have, categorizing so that when we get to that point, we know, okay, this can go.
Right. Once, once we, we were getting them, you know, identifying blocks, whatever, but then, okay, now it just sits in a corner looking for.
Okay, I just moved this. Yeah. And then the other thing I'm, I see in here, I'm, I'm happy, uh, starting to work on the stormwater mapping RFP. If there's no objection, if you.